Good evening and welcome to the Select Board Meeting for Ashland for June 26, 2024. Welcome. We have a few special guests in the audience. We have some Scouts, Life Scouts, who are here learning about civic engagement and about their community, so it's nice to have them in the house. And with that, I'm going to ask them to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are calling this meeting to order. Please be aware that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live via WACA TV and livestreamed on Facebook. Remote participation is available using the Zoom video conferencing platform. Any disruption with the video conferencing platform will result in the platform being shut down. In the event of a disruption, broadcasting will continue on WACA TV and livestreamed on Facebook. So, welcome. We are going to start with citizens' participation. If there's anyone here who'd like to speak to something not on our agenda or to our agenda. Please introduce yourself.
Evening. Dr. Sony, 49 Hawthorne Road, Ashland. May I stand back to get the whole picture? It is on the agenda. Thank you for saying that at the last second. Last night, Comprehensive Plan, the best group session they ever had. Worked together, understood together. Let's hope that the town is working to be together. McKee, you missed a great night last night. So, next time you come, we can't put it on tape for you to have a
Well, Mark, if you remember, I was there, but then I had to leave because there were some logistical issues happening. So, I'm sorry. I missed it, but I will be there for the next one.
Okay, then we just have up-and-coming siblings come with you. That's it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mark. Is there anyone else in person or via Zoom for citizens' participation? If not, we are gonna, we have a public hearing at 7:15, so we can't start that until 7:15 unfortunately because of how it's announced. But we will jump down to old and new business. Let's start with item A, announce the Select Board Scholarship recipients. Jo and Claudia, if you'd like to take us through that, please?
Are you ready?
Sure.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had the distinct pleasure of representing the board at Class Day, and we had two presentations to give to awards, and they went to Andrew Luago and Emily Umholtz, both deserving. We had 28 total applicants for the scholarships, and every one of them was deserving. And I think Claudia and I, and tell me if I'm wrong, I think we want to tweak it a little bit because I think it was a little bit confusing to some of them because we didn't receive a lot of the requirements that were asked for. So, maybe if we go over and try to maybe make it a little simpler for them to, I don't know how much simpler or more we can make it, but it's just, you know.
It's pretty straightforward as it is.
It is straightforward, but I think they got confused with the essay that they needed to write. And it's not a letter of acceptance, but a letter that, you know, what work did you do for the community and not for the school type. And I think they got confused with that aspect of it. Just a little. That's my interpretation.
That's interesting, because, go ahead, Claudia.
Well, I just think that sometimes there's an overlap there, right? And so, I think that some of the kids were referencing, trying to reference the overlap that might exist between those two types of service and that. And I mean, I think if that's the most important criteria for us, then, you know, I don't know, do we need to weight it or do we need to, you know, spell it out, that that's the number one? Just say it outright instead of making them guess. And then certainly the other thing for the, you know, some students who were missing, you know, an item here or there. So, what we could do is just make it so it, you know, the submission is not accepted unless all these things are done, right? So, you know, because I'm sure some of them didn't even realize that they were just being disqualified because they hadn't submitted all the pieces, but.
Well, I know, I mean, Jo, you and I could attest this over the years, right? There's always the kids who, they do it quickly or they don't submit everything or so. I mean, certainly if we can automate it, Claudia, to your point of if you don't have everything in, it's not even accepted and you're notified of that. The more automation, the better.
Please look at it and, you know, resend it, you know, we submit it.
And I mean, maybe clarify the statement that we're looking for what they've done for the community and not just for their school. So, great. Good.
Thanks.
Well, thank you for doing that. It's always a fun time to go and get to announce
Yeah, I just want to add that they were, we had so many, and they were all very deserving candidates.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and I think, you know, I had the pleasure of knowing Emily when she went through MINDUS and really knowing what, you know, a great kid she was and how even I can remember sitting with her a couple of times and having conversations, and she was so mature, so such a together young woman at the time, really beyond her years. And Andrew came to us after MINDUS, but I did actually, you know, we were kind of tied on the second applicant and did a little research and heard some great stuff about him. So, I think that we were both pretty excited about the candidates and only wished that we had more money to give to everybody.
Everybody, yeah.
Well, that means that's certainly a conversation, right? We upped the amount we're giving to two. We could certainly say, do we want to spread the wealth a little bit? But that's a discussion for another time. Okay, great. Thank you.
And just to, before we move on, so we gave two $2,000 scholarships, correct?
Yep.
So, all you Boy Scouts back there, take notes. So, this will be important things to remember as, as.
When you become seniors.
Yep. So, anyway, so thank you guys for your work on that.
It's always fun.
Next item on our agenda, because it's still not 7:15 yet, is discuss setting up a joint meeting with the Planning Board. So, Claudia, you had brought this up at a board report, so I just wanted to find out what people were thinking, what are their thoughts about this. And just to let you know, we are also in the process of trying to set up a joint meeting with the Planning Board specifically for the Comprehensive Plan. So.
Yeah, so I think the idea behind this was more, and I have had an opportunity to talk to a couple of Planning Board members, was more that it was less of a working session as just kind of a time to come together and just have, you know, some conversation and build a little, you know, collegiality amongst the two boards. And so, it wasn't necessarily to have, like I said, to have, be working on one particular topic or that.
Right, I understand.
And that was indeed, you know, I talked to Tricia and I think I talked to Kate as well. And that, I think, is what, you know, when I originally had mentioned it to them, that they were interested in that kind of a meeting, right?
Thoughts from other members? I mean, I think it's a great idea. Go ahead, McKee.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, actually. I think we should definitely move on that as soon as we can. Be very helpful for a lot of reasons.
Evenings, Saturday, Saturday morning, Saturday afternoon. I know it's tough, those of us who work during the day and have lots of other meetings and stuff, but we have 10 people's schedules plus Town Manager and possibly the Town Planner that we may want to have there as well, so. In July. Well, the joint meeting that we're looking to have with the Planning Board is going to be a presentation by the consultant, and then they wanted that, they're looking for that to be about a half hour, and then they're looking for the Comprehensive Plan Committee to go off and do some work based on that meeting. So, unless we do it before, but I think, I think the feel that I'm getting from Claudia is it's a more casual thing. It's not sitting around this table, I think.
If it's easier, we could certainly try to piggyback it and have, you know, some, you know, some snacks and the meat and kind of a gathering beforehand.
Right, or it's a, yeah, it's maybe a downstairs for an hour before and then come up. Okay.
Yeah, something along those lines or, you know, even a little bit longer. I mean, I'd certainly be willing to host something if that worked out better. You know, I'm open to what works for the members.
I think it's a good idea. I think that if we're going to try to get everybody's schedules together, though, we should have at least some, I don't want to say meat on the bones, but that's kind of, you know.
Why are we getting together?
Correct. Yeah, because we're gonna, not only are we going to have the Comprehensive Plan Meeting where we're trying to get the boards together, but we'll also have something coming up about MBTA communities at some point that we're going to jointly need to meet. So, maybe it's sort of a preamble to one of those two meetings instead of trying to get a third date where we are all trying to get together. But I think it's a good idea. I think, I think the more that we work collaboratively, it's, it's.
Yep, oh, definitely.
A good thing, so.
Okay, great. I'll reach out to Tricia and we'll get this going. Okay. Next item, as it's still not 7:15, is vote on a one-year reappointment of Town Council. So, we did the review of Town Council. We can only appoint them for one year, and I don't, there was nothing in the packet for this, so I think all of you maybe have hopefully met with Lisa and other members of her team from other things that you've done here in town. So, basically, we just need to vote to extend their contract by another year. Do we need anything else on that, Michael?
No, it's just, it would just be the year ending June 30 of 2025.
Okay.
And, you know, I would just say, based on the evaluation that you covered during the last.
Starting July 1st.
Starting July 1st.
Yep.
All right, so I'll make a motion to reappoint Town Council beginning July 1st, 2024, and ending June 31st.
June 30, 2025. Okay. Can I get a second?
Second.
Great, thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Great, 5-0. Thank you all, and we have our Town Council for another year. Great.
Can we approve the consent agenda, so you have a minute or two, because it's 21 quick votes?
Sure. Sure. No, that's fine. We can do the consent agenda. If I can get a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Great, consent agenda. I'm just going to break away for a second for the young gentlemen who are watching us. So, you're looking at the agenda. You have a copy of it for you, in front of you, right? So, if you notice, there's a lot of items under the consent agenda. And what happens is those are all pretty straightforward things that we don't really need to discuss, that it's either reappointing someone or thanking someone, or, let's see, yeah, those are most of this. Approving minutes, things like that. So, by putting them all in one item called a consent agenda, we can quickly pass, one, two, six items in as quickly as you just saw. You also, we also use it at town meeting for certain things that are the same year after year. You're welcome.
I'd like to thank Martin O'Neal for his time on the Town.
Oh, Town Forest, yep. Okay, great.
Sure. Sorry. Because I wasn't prepared yet to vote consent agenda, and I apologize for that. But I think we only got one set of meeting minutes, and our consent agenda said two. I think we only got meeting minutes from, from June 5th. I don't see.
So, you're missing the May 24th?
Yeah, I don't see meeting minutes from May 24th.
Okay. So, we'll scratch that May 24th was part of it. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry for the last.
No, no, okay. Nope, that's okay. Okay, moving back, it is now 7:15, or it will be by the time I read this, and we do have Bill here for this next one. So, legal notice, Town of Ashland. Notice is hereby given that the Select Board will conduct a hearing regarding the transfer of stock for Ashland Public Market, Inc., DBA Main Street Wine and Spirits, Ashland Public Market, DBA Main Street Wine and Spirits, 197 Main Street, Ashland, Mass., 01721. A public hearing will be held on the matter on Wednesday, June 26, 2024, at 7:15 PM. Persons wishing to be heard on this matter are invited to attend the public hearing in person or by logging onto the Zoom meeting. Interested parties who are unable to attend the hearing may submit written comments to the Select Board's Office, Town Hall 101 Main Street, Ashland, Mass. 01721, or by emailing Susan Robey at sroby@ashlandmass.com. Okay. So, we've announced the public hearing, and we are reviewing a change of stock option for this entity, and that's it. If we are, William, if you could come up and take us through the change and why it's necessary?
Okay.
Actually, motion to open the public hearing, which I've read.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Perfect.
Good evening. William Goldberg from Main Street Wine and Spirits. This is just house cleaning on some paperwork that came to our attention in the past year. Just when my father passed almost 27 years ago, and my uncle passed five years ago, they never properly split their businesses in the eyes of the Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission. And so, this is, all this is, is just letting them know that my dad and my uncle don't own the business anymore.
Okay, good. And we, unfortunately, Susan's not here, but either Jen or Michael, from what I can tell, we had everything we needed in our packet to approve this. Okay? Okay?
And as far as I'm aware, we have not received any comments.
Okay. Okay.
Well, congratulations on your new business. We're about to be.
Any questions or, well, anyone here to speak against this? Not that I expect that, but we just need to go through. Any comments or questions from the Select Board regarding this?
Is Bullard's Market still in operation?
It is under new ownership.
Okay. Because that was the other, that was your uncle's business, right?
That's right. That's right. His son sold it to the person who'd been working there for about 30 years. So, that took place last year.
Last year?
Yeah, that's pretty much when all of this came to light.
Oh, came to light. Got you. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? If I can get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And then if I can get a motion to approve the stock change as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All those, any other discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
And that carries 4-0. You are all set?
All right, thank you all.
Now, congratulations.
Now, congratulations.
It's finally mine.
There you go. There you go.
Now the fun starts.
Thank you. Great. Okay. Moving on, I see Steve Greenberg is here. So, if it's okay with Steve and everybody else, if he's actually still there, okay, until we see him, we will move on. Because my understanding is that Steve is giving the presentation from the Affordable Housing Trust. Okay, so, let's keep going down our old and new business until we see Steve come back. Vote to approve a one-day Bino Bingo license request from K&amp;B Crayons &amp; Beyond to be held on August 9th, 2024, at the VFW 311 Pleasant Street. We have the information. This is basically just, they're looking for a one-day license to be able to do this program, and it is a fundraiser for K&amp;B's Crayons &amp; Beyond, a nonprofit charitable organization. Michael, we just need to vote to approve the one-day license, correct? Any questions, comments, concerns? Okay. I move that we approve the, I would ask for a motion to approve the one-day Bino license as requested.
So moved.
Okay. Great. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. And that passes. Good luck to them.
If they're not doing anything that day, go and support them.
Do we all need to sign?
Yeah, you should sign. You should sign the license.
Okay. We'll do that after the meeting. Yeah, so remember, no one can leave until we've signed that license. Great. Wonderful. Still no Steve? Well, he's. Oh, he just needs to. Maybe he doesn't realize he's here. Now he's gone.
Now he needs to be let in.
Must be on some good medicine.
Right, he might, we want to make him co-host. Yep. Okay, well, as we continue working on that, Michael? Yes, let's do the update on the assessment of the Town Hall.
Sure. So, just a couple of updates related to Town Hall and essentially the infrastructure. So, one of the things that we have been working upon is, first of all, basically securing the building. It had a significantly cracked beam based on, when the renovation was done, I think around 2005. So, what happened was the proper supports wasn't put in place in order to support the HVAC systems that were put in place. So, unfortunately, that led to a pretty significant crack and twist in one of the main supporting beams, which, so we've ended up going through and, you know, having to get an architect and engineer, and so that's been fixed and secured. So, that's number one. The second thing we've been doing is, I mean, as you can see, the exterior, you know, we painted it probably eight or nine years ago, but it's looking a little tired, a little rough. So, instead of just looking at painting this time, one of the things that we've done is Doug Scott, our building commissioner, who's kind of heading this project, he went and secured a lift with an architect to actually go through all the Town Hall and the exterior and kind of look at the places that have rotted and all of that good stuff, and making determinations of what needs to be replaced and how it can be replaced. And so, he's taking that assessment and putting it all together, and we'll put that out a bit later this year to do the work, like whatever kind of replacement work that needs to be done, and then as well as painting. And so, one of the things I will make clear is that, you know, we used a composite material for the steps because we felt that that was probably most appropriate. But, you know, for the Town Hall, proper, if you will, the exterior, you know, we'll be using more like the historical period materials, you know, wood, clapboard, and stuff like that.
Okay. Good.
So, anyway, yeah, it was, as we all know how hot it was last week, and so, you know, Doug, we've got some good shots of Doug up on the lift with all of his safety harness and stuff, so.
So, has that main support been repaired, or is it in the box?
Yeah. So, it has been repaired. Yeah, and there were a couple of other things, like apparently there was another support that was supposed to be put in place. Really kind of, I'm looking up because it's kind of in this area, and it was not, so that's been taken care of and addressed. Not anymore. We probably should have moved a long time ago, Jo, but now we're in good shape.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just, we had, we had budgeted for this this year, right? Like, we had, when we were looking at the budget for, this was part of that allocation.
Eight million, yep.
Are we thinking that this is going to, you know, depending on like how much replacement and stuff, is that, is it going to align with what we had projected that the cost would be?
It should. I mean, we, I think we'd put in 450, and, yeah, that should cover it. I was kind of hoping we'd have some more left over, but it doesn't sound like, you know, based on Doug's estimation, that that's going to be the case.
Unfortunately, pricing right now for collaborative, like, you know, are higher.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Ah, nice. Nice.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the Town Hall project, Jo?
A question about the painting. Do you ever consider using Rhino Shield?
Jo, I think, given the historic nature of the building.
Yeah.
Yeah. You're talking about like a composite type of.
More like a plasticky. It's the type of, it's the type of paint, right? It's more of a plasticky.
It's a ceramic. It's a ceramic.
Ceramic type of, yeah. I think we'd probably be looking more at the traditional, you know, acrylic or.
I'm just saying, it would last longer and it'd save the town's taxpayers' money over the years type of deal.
Yeah, I mean, if we wanted to go in that direction, then, I mean, we would look at something like a composite type of material for the siding. But given that this building's on the National Register, I'm not sure exactly what.
It'd be an interesting question to ask to see if they would, they would allow that, you know, because I know a lot of historic places down in Florida are using it, so.
Yeah, yeah, I'm trying to remember the exact, the Secretary of Interior standards. I get to know those with the Valentine quite a bit. And there are certainly times when it is appropriate to use that. If I remember correctly, it's really more in a location that's not very visible to the public, but.
Town Hall was just on Chronicle on Monday, right?
That's true. That is true.
So, we don't want to. Okay. Good. Seeing no other questions on the update on the Town Hall project, and we see Steve Greenberg. Steve, welcome.
Thank you.
If you're ready, we can start a little early.
I apologize for technical difficulty. I tried to unmute and unvideo, but here I am. So, thank you for inviting me to this evening's meeting, and happy to answer any questions. And maybe first, I could tell you a little bit about what's new and what's going on with the Affordable Trust.
That'd be great.
Sure. Currently, there's a property on Main Street that the Trust has been working with the property owner and Habitat for Humanity to develop a single-family home on that property. And that's been a long time vacant parcel of land that we're excited about the possibility of developing an affordable unit there. And Habitat's been great to work with. The property owners have been great to work with. So, they're working their way through the process and the state. So, I look forward to Habitat coming in front of various boards in town in the very near future and getting something put up on that lot that serves the Affordable Housing numbers here in town.
Great.
Another project we have been working, I'd like to say collaboratively with the, with the Select Board is Olive Street and the former Sipson property that the town has owned for quite a while. That property was purchased a long time ago with Community Preservation Act funds, two buckets, open space and affordable. It's a property that has some uplands on the. property that has some uplands on the on the street and, uh, a lot of wetlands in the back. And I think, uh, beavers probably enjoy that property more than anyone, but, uh, we, uh, you know, we, we did some wetland studies years ago. We had all that updated and approved, uh, with, through the Conservation Commission. And, uh, we took those new boundaries and setbacks and, uh, the trust retained a landscape architect, a gentleman by name Stephen Cosmos. And, uh, he's come up with, uh, some scenarios, uh, of very, uh, limited scope, because again, of the, um, the wetlands, uh, sort of make it a, uh, a, a small envelope. So, um, I have a document I can, if I'm allowed to, I could share screen with everyone, or, uh, just talk about it, whichever you prefer.
No, it'd be great if you could show it, I believe you're set up to, to, um, as a co-host.
Okay.
Yeah. So you can just share your screen.
Here with me?
Yes. So Joe, it, this didn't get into our packet, but you all should have received it via email from Joe.
Is that, is that visible?
Very good, yep, that's it.
Okay. So what, um, the landscape architect has done has taken a section of Olive Street that probably has the greatest depth in term, in terms of setbacks with, with road, wetlands and zoning, and come up with a couple of different scenarios here that challenge, uh, both access to the parcel and, uh, and the number of units. So the top left has six units with twelve parking spaces, as does the, uh, the, uh, rendering on, uh, the viewers' right. The, uh, parking gets a little complicated, but the purpose of, uh, putting something like this together would be in the hopes of, uh, with the select board's approval, going out, uh, with a request for proposals that gave those who might be interested in developing a hundred percent affordable units on this property some ideas of what they could potentially develop. So we would have for someone who'd be interested, a full set of, uh, wetlands and topography and approvals, a- as well as these particular renderings. Maybe they could come up with something that fits better, looks better. Maybe has a few more units, but again, it's, it's very compact. And, uh, so that would be the affordable component of the property. And again, because of the extreme wetlands there, um, I think the balance of the property would be for those to, uh, enjoy, whether they want to walk back there and get their feet wet, or, uh, just have something pretty to look at.
Okay.
So that's, um, that's something we'd again like to further discuss with the select board to see if they'd be, uh, interested, willing to go forward with an RFP. And, uh, I think the other, uh, most recent update to the Affordable Trust is that, uh, we're at full membership. Carlton Phelps has joined our ranks. So that brings our, uh, membership to five. And, uh, he's new, he's new to the, uh, to the trust, but in our last meeting, he very much participated, and we look forward to his future interest and, and future additions to the, uh, to the trust and what we're trying to get done.
Great. Questions or comments? Claudia, go ahead, and then Brandy.
Hi Steve, um, just, I have a couple of, well, one question about the Main Street property. So how does that work when somebody, like the owners have, are selling it, or well, they must be selling it to Habitat for Humanity to build?
Well, um, like any real estate transaction, Claudia, you need site control. So they have site control, they have a purchase and sale agreement with the property owners. They needed that to, uh, present not only to the, to various boards here in town, but to the state.
Okay.
So, uh, there is a contract. They haven't shared it.
Right, right.
I think that's private between them and the property owner. But, um,
So I guess it might, I guess the thing that I was trying to get at is if somebody owns property and they, um, you know, want to make it available to a developer who would build something, or in this case Habitat for Humanity, is it, is it sold at a competitive market? Or is rate, or is it discounted in some way? Or does the, the state participate because it's, um, going to be, you know, for affordable housing, or?
Um, I don't think the state contributes in terms of, of financial.
Yeah.
Um, I think the biggest financial contributor here will be the Town of Ashland through the Affordable Trust.
Yep.
Uh, because, you know, to, as mentioned earlier in talking about rehabbing town hall, construction costs are silly. Soft costs to get something approved, uh, is not cheap. So I would say that, you know, ten years ago, fifteen years ago, the purchase price on this property, is probably what's reflected in the contract. So it's, um, it's probably a twenty-five, thirty percent of what would be market rate. But, um, yeah, I think Claudia, it all depends on the project, but, you know, sometimes properties donate.
Right.
You know, the YMCA project is, is a donated parcel.
Yeah, no, I know it is, yeah.
It's not the easiest parcel, and maybe that's why it's still available.
Yeah.
But, um, I hope I answered your question, or if I didn't, please tell me how I can better, better answer the question.
Yeah, no, I, I think you have, and then, um, the, the Olive Street property, um, so that is, so that's currently owned by the town. And then for it to be affordable units, how does, how does that work? They're, they're set by that, the certain formula in terms of price? There is, are there some priorities given to people who work for the town?
Uh, depends on the size of the final project.
Okay.
Um, I, I think unfortunately with Main Street, that won't be the case, but I think that can be certainly part of the RFP that, um, town residents might get, uh, certain advantages in the potential ownership or rental of the property on Olive Street. But, um, there's pretty strict guidelines about that. The, um, again, as, as I mentioned earlier, the parcel was purchased with CPA funds out of the two buckets, open space and affordable, so, anything that was sold there would have to be affordable.
Mm-hmm.
Or built there would have to have deed restrictions relative to affordable. So I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, so, and, and those, though, a developer there, right? It is it, are they? I'm just asking, I guess, it, is developing a property that is a, going to be affordable housing as lucrative as it would be to go and, and develop a property that isn't affordable housing? Or, you know, I'm trying to understand what the impetus would be for a developer to step up?
Um, there, there wouldn't be impetus for a market developer.
Okay.
This is a project that, uh, entities like Habitat or others that might be looking for tax credits, but I don't think that would be the case here. Uh, this is not a financial gain by the town or the developer, uh, if we do something on Olive Street or Main Street. It's, uh, it's a negative, it's a negative, that will, uh, you know, improvement, if you will.
Steven, couldn't they go to the state? Right, there's, there's housing, the, the housing authority at the state, that if they're building affordable housing, they can get some kind of financing as well. There's funding available for that. If you look at, um, like Robert Hillway, they were able to get how, some funding to help build that parcel, so, build that property.
Robert Hillway was actually a, um, a federal program and there were tax credits, and that, that took years to get approved.
Yeah.
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 On many different levels, that, that took years to get approved. Um, in a, in a case like, um, Main Street and a case like Olive Street, I think the, um, the financing would most likely come through a state-approved agency for the homeowner.
Right.
But in terms of, uh, development and construction, I think it would be, uh, one of the primary, uh, fund sources would be the trust.
Right, okay. And then, and then you're always kind of looking for a, a non, a nonprofit developer, if you will?
Absolutely.
Okay, and are those, um, do we, is there a pool from which we kind of seek out? I know we've put out an RFP, but do we also advertise it with?
Well, I, I think that, you know,
Just with the RFP?
Be willing, I think Jen could speak to that, uh, but the RFP is, um, broadly advertised, uh, based on state guidelines, 30B guidelines. And, uh, there are a number of nonprofit developers out there. I don't see a lot of them, uh, banging on the door to, to get a project that is going to depend on a local, uh, funding and, uh, possibly some state assistance. But I think we can get it done. I'm actually very confident we can get it done. At a price.
Right.
The other thing too is, the developer doesn't have to purchase the, the land, because that's town-owned land. So that, there's, there is that component of it, right?
The Olive Street parcel, yes.
Yeah, so they're, they're starting at a different point than if they had to purchase the land.
So the profitability is, is a little bit, yeah, yeah, so.
I think there'd be some subdividing. You know, I don't, I don't see, um, if it's, if it's the individual units are purchased, I don't see those individual units taking uh, any ownership in the balance of the land available in the back. I think we would have to, uh, look at a plan that subdivided out the development parcel and the rest would stay with the town.
And what is the, in terms of their, you know, going through to the permitting of that with the planning board and that, is it, what's that similar to? Is it typical?
It would be similar to, it would be a 40B.
Yeah, it's similar to a 40B, that's, I guess.
Yeah, so there'd be the zoning board of appeals.
Okay.
Michael, you wanted to add something, and then Brandy?
Yeah, so, so Steve, what you're saying is, like, we would have to give the property basically to the developer, and then we would probably need to make it an additional financial contribution, right? To make it financially feasible?
That's a hundred percent correct.
From the trust.
From the trust funds, correct, yeah.
From the trust, from the town, you know, it comes from the town, from CPA to the trust, with the developer.
And the trust right now has significant funds.
Well, those funds aren't as significant as they used to be, but, but there, there are, there are
But there's still a fair amount.
Some dollars in the trust.
There's, so.
I also envision, um, when we get there, to go to town meeting and, um, let's hear what the town has to say about this project and, uh, ask for some funding at, at that, uh, at that time.
Right, so right now, uh, there's still affordable, I mean, there's housing money sitting in the CPC bucket that has to be then moved from CPC to the trust.
But so the monies are, would not be on top of what, the tax rate in any way, shape, or form?
No.
No.
Nope.
Okay. Thank you.
Brandy?
So thank, um, thank you, Steve, and, and the whole Affordable Housing Trust for all the work on the Olive Street project. Um, I know the last time, I think that you were here, we were talking about, you know, what potentially that could look like, and you had to do a lot of work on the, the wetlands delineation and all the, the the surveying and all the, the, you know, the groundwork to even get to this point. So seeing, seeing a sketch with, with actual units on it is, is, uh, pretty, pretty cool, I think, so. So thank you for all the work on that, and I'm, I'm looking forward to, to seeing this kind of go, go to the next step. Um, I was just curious, you know, you had mentioned ownership or, or rental, and, you know, are these, are these looking to be like probably two-bedroom units? Or how big, how big of, how big little houses are these, or, or I guess that's?
I, I think the state prefers three bedrooms, if it's a property for sale. So, um, I think that would be the, uh, the way we would hopefully write into the RFP. And, uh, I think, I think in a development like this, the trust has talked about it for a long time, and I, I think Joe, uh, would back me up on this, that we're, we're thinking more of a for-sale rather than a for-rent.
Okay.
Uh, I'd certainly like to see homeownership, and, you know, what happens with entities like Habitat for Humanity, there's a lot of sweat equity from the purchasers that goes into, literally from the ground up, they're involved in the construction. And, uh, you know, pride of ownership, I think, is important. So, you know, we certainly want these to be an asset to the town and to those that are going to live there.
Great. Um, and then so, as far as the whether it would be, you know, is it, like, you look at certain AMI for, for these types of units? You, would you look at, Joe just said eighty percent, so,
It's likely eighty.
That's kind of what you're looking for?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Yeah. You know, I think they would, they'd probably sell probably, you know, in today's world, they'd probably sell around three hundred thousand dollars, which, you know, that's affordable in today's world.
Absolutely. Well.
Not really, but it, that's what the numbers say.
Um, so just to talk about the eighty percent, it's eighty percent AMI, the area mean income. So who would be eligible for these types of units?
And with the AMI, with the current median income being a hundred twenty-five thousand?
Property, it's, it's the.
So the larger the family, the, uh, more income they're allowed to make. Ashland is in the, so the, the districts are set up by HUD. Ashland is in the Boston district, so the, uh, allowable income is quite substantial, you know, a hundred thousand plus. So the larger your family, the more you're allowed to make.
And, and it has to be your first home, is that true?
Uh, there are some caveats there, Claudia, but typically your first home.
Okay, and this is into perpetuity, so, um.
Deed restriction would be in perpetuity, I think that'd be one of our, not only the town, but the state's requirement.
Right. And then, just, just from a timeframe perspective, what are, what are your thoughts about, like, timing for, you know, to put this out to bid for an RFP and? What, I'm looking at Jen too. So I was just curious from, from, from your perspective, what, what that kind of looks like.
Well, if, if you want to make a motion, uh, certainly look forward to working with, uh, with Jen to, uh,
We need to put on our RFP.
Yeah, I, I just like, there's a lot involved in these things.
I also think, you know, we're doing our retreat, the first meeting in August, and we can talk about timing and how this fits into the other projects. I think a lot of work has been done, but I think before we, I mean, I, I'm with you, I'm like ready to jump in, but we know that a lot needs to be done.
Yeah.
Uh, any other questions or comments? Because if not, I have a.
Yeah, the only quick comment I wanted to make with, with respect to what Brandy just brought up is that the wetland delineation, we were really surprised at how much land we actually lost over the years.
Yeah.
Uh, when we did our first, uh, wetland delineation, and it's quite substantial.
You can tell by looking at this plan.
We're talking about a ball field. We wanted, we were thinking about putting a passive, you know, recreation part of it. That's all gone.
Yeah.
All of it's all gone because of the delineation.
Well, because how the wetlands have increased.
Yeah, how they increased, yes.
Climate change would have to be?
I think the beavers, more than any of that.
The beavers, huh?
The beavers.
So Steve, thank you for coming and, and chatting with us. I just had a couple of comments slash thoughts on housing and what we're trying to do here in, in Ashland. One of the complaints I hear from a lot of people is, we're doing a lot of rentals and not a lot of purchase. So the idea, idea that these would be for purchase rather than rental, I think is a great idea. Uh, the other thing to think about is, I'm looking at the floor plans and, you know, they're three-bedroom. We also are hearing that people are looking for other forms of housing, right? They're not looking for maybe larger units, they're looking for smaller units. Um, instead of these being single, you know, single-family, is it possible to make these two-family but smaller? Just things to think about. Is it something that we could do senior, right? Small senior housing? That's affordable. I don't know, those are just some of the things that I've heard people say. Certainly the, the small house thing that you're, you know, it's sort of something that's a lot of people are talking about. Instead of having a bigger house, having a smaller house, we could potentially fit more units on the, the land. Any thoughts on that?
I, I do have a thought on that, and, and it's unfortunate. I've had the pleasure of putting my sister's house on the market. She lives in, uh, she lives in Hoppington on Lumber Street, she's surrounded by McMansions.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, the house is seven hundred and eighty square feet. I, I'm not going to divulge the, uh, price that it's under contract for, but you would be shocked.
I can imagine.
Talking between four and five hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
For seven hundred and eighty square foot house. So, you know, bring that house to Ashland, you're talking about four hundred twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yep.
I think, I think the development world out there, um, has a, has a good understanding of the market, and the right nonprofit developer knows what of the market and the right nonprofit developer knows what the state wants and what the town wants and I think we can, we can guide an IRFP to get as much bang for as many bucks as we have to spend as bucks.
Okay, great, yeah. I, I think all three of these, I, I like the ones where they go completely off the street to get into the development, I think because of Olive Street and either the one-way circle around or the in, in entrance in and out, something that gets the houses in their front part, so they're not, all the homes are not going in and out of Olive Street. Yeah.
Right.
Okay, great. Any other questions or comments for Steve? Gentlemen, any questions that you would like to ask? No? The reason I'm asking that, Steve, is we have three boy, three Boy Scouts here who are learning.
That's great.
Yeah, so, they, they came specifically to hear about affordable housing.
I'll be happy to talk to them anytime.
Yeah, so you can reach out to Steve Greenberg. He's, he's very knowledgeable. He's our.
He is.
So, great.
Get better, my friend.
If there's no other questions, yes, feel better, Steve. If there's no other questions, uh, thank you very much, Steve, for coming and speaking with us and we look forward to moving these projects along.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you for you, thank you for your work on this.
Yeah.
Okay.
So many years ago, Jen and I and Brandy had the opportunity to actually work on a Habitat for Humanity house when it was being built in Holliston. So I think that's certainly one of the things that as Habitat comes into our community with this house, they I'm sure would offer opportunities for people who want to volunteer to help build. It's actually pretty cool to go and help and then see the house get built and as Steve said, with Habitat for Humanity, whoever is selected to be moving into the home, they also have to put so many, so much time and energy working on building their own home.
Steve called it sweat equity.
Yeah. Great. Okay, wonderful. Thank you for sharing the information, Joe, beforehand, appreciate that. Moving on in our agenda update on the DEI project, Michael and probably Makita as well.
Yeah, definitely, and, and Makita or Jen, please feel to jump in here, but, so, you know, I, I'm happy to say that we've basically concluded our engagement with iSuccess Consulting and T. Renee Smith, the energetic dynamo that is the principal of said firm. And so we got basically a, a lot of good actionable information from the surveys and the interviews that we did, which was a key component, the first component of, of this stage, which is developing a DEI action plan. And again, just to kind of refresh everybody's memory, we did interviews and surveys of both, you know, town leadership, also employees and then also community members and basically got their take on basically what their experiences have been and what they have witnessed and things that they feel that are important in the DEI realm moving forward. And we got a variety of responses back, which we did review as the DEI task force with, with the consultant. So since that time, Jen and I have met with our department heads to, to review basically the employee stuff and go through that and talk about basically what our potential next steps could look like. We still have to meet as the DEI task force and do the same thing and I think our, although we don't have specifics right now, our next step we know is to do more of a communication out with the community to explain, this is kind of where we are with the process, this is what we've heard. And then these are a couple of steps that we're going to take based on the, on the information that we've received from an action.
Will the report be available for the public to read?
Yes.
Okay.
And so that's pretty much it in a nutshell. Makita or Jen, do you, you know, have anything to, to, to add to that?
No, that was a pretty good run, that was a pretty good rundown of, of what's happening. So, yeah, I don't really have anything to add, Michael, thanks for the recap.
Yeah, and thanks to the DEI task force again, and Makita and Jen being a part of that, but then also the other members.
Yes.
I think they've been very, very critical in terms of providing feedback, a good set of eyes, good questions to help guide this process. And thanks to the community and everybody that participated.
Let's say, yeah, absolutely.
Will, will we be able to take this report and roll it into our work with the comprehensive plan?
Yes.
Perfect.
Yes, and that, that was one of the primary.
Yeah, I was about to say, that was a, a key focus of what we were trying to do here, so, absolutely.
Yeah, Makita and I have been very, very in sync in terms of the fact, from the very beginning, that we can't have a plan that is sitting on the shelf. It has to be actionable.
Right, it has to be actionable and it has to be executable, so, yeah.
Good. Any other questions regarding the project from anyone else, comments?
Just one quick question. Were you guys satisfied with the survey and how it came out? Were you surprised, were there any surprises that you didn't take away?
You know, I, well, I'll take the first part. You know, I think that the methodology was sound. I was actually very impressed with the consultant and how they actually conducted the survey and, and just how we gathered the data, I think was very sound and solid, so, you know, the results that we have are a good starting point, I think, for us. It's not the end-all, be-all, it certainly won't, you know, give us any sort of complete answers, but I think it's a good starting point. Yeah, Michael, I don't know if you have, or Jen, if you have anything to add around that.
Yeah, I, I thought, like Makita said, I think the survey, the, the methodology and everything was sound, so I do believe that what we have is a good, accurate base from which to make decisions from or to work from. I think the range and the breadth of answers that we had elicited, I guess you could say, like a range of different thoughts and maybe even emotions from me and I'm sure for everybody else. I was very appreciative of some of the data that we received, especially from some of the employees, because it didn't, you know, even though it was focused on diversity, equity and inclusion, you know, there were some other things just about culture that kind of came through that was pretty interesting and something that I think that we can use moving forward.
And this included not just general government, but the schools as well?
No, this, well, I mean, people certainly opined and offered their opinion on schools, but.
But it was not, yeah, so that, I think that there were a lot of opinions about many things in town, that town services especially, but also just business, you know, folks' experience generally in town around this. And of course, there are a lot of families who are part of the schools who responded and shared some of their experiences in that survey as well, but there, there was definitely, Joe, to get back to you, to answer the second part of your question, that there was definitely a diversity of opinion of, of, of different experiences in town around this issue. So I think, again, I think it's going to be a solid foundation for us to start rolling up our sleeves and taking some action, yeah.
So when you talk about staff, you're talking about general government staff was part of that and part of that discussion. I mean, I know the schools have been doing some work as well.
They have, extensive work, several years ago even.
Yeah, yeah.
For sure.
Okay, great. Any other questions or comments? No, thank you, Makita, for being on that. Thank you, Michael and Jen, for your work on that. I know it's, it's very important that we look at what we're doing in our community because of how our community has changed in the last 15, 20 years. It's, it's definitely, our community looks a lot different than it did before, so.
Yeah, well, like, you know, I think every community should change, no matter what the community itself looks like. I think that, you know, we are a world, we're not just these insular communities anymore or even countries, right? Everything is, I, I don't think we can ever have real peace and, and a, a good world when there are people starving and people, you know, there's too many imbalances, right, throughout the world, so. I think it, it's nice to certainly be in a community that embraces that, but everybody needs to.
Great, thank you for that, Claudia. Moving on, discuss and vote on the mass housing comment letter for the oasis at Ashland located at 61 Waverly Street. And as of today, we have received 40 comments. You all should have received this packet. Unfortunately, it was as we were coming in, but there's a lot of similarities to this response as there was to the Mill response, where we had a lot of input. So, Michael, do you want to take us through this and is there any big difference that we need to be aware of?
Well, there, there's, there's a few, I, I think, not necessarily big ones, but things that, you know, we should kind of run through. And, you know, as you mentioned, Yolanda, you know, you all got this as you're coming in and I do apologize for that, this obviously way later than gives you an opportunity to kind of digest this and, and, you know, make some comments associated with it. But, you know, essentially, you know, the, the letter itself, I, I mean, the, the lead-in in terms of our rationale against why we think this project is not good the way it is presented, really hinges upon the work that we've already done in developing housing throughout the community, both in terms of what has been built and what has been permitted. And then, you know, we also reference the fact that there is an additional 250 units that we're talking about, aside from what we've detailed here, that is at least, I, I guess you could say for lack of a better term, on the table with the Mill proposal currently before mass housing. So this is a little bit of a different project and a little bit different site than the Mill. First of all, the, whereas the Mill has been seen and visible and has been talked about and plans put together for, you know, four years, you know, this site itself, really, we haven't seen anything about it for, you know, since, since I've been here for, for a while, so it's relatively new. And then also, I think, you know, there's very, there's very little information that's required by mass housing as part of their application package. And I think, you know, with a developer with like the Mill project SLV, which has experience in Massachusetts doing a lot of, a lot of 40B projects, I think in their application you see a lot of data, even more than above what's required for mass housing. Whereas with this one, it is a relatively new development company in, at least in Massachusetts. You know, technically their, their LLC for this project is RRSP acquisitions, but it's essentially the parent company is Pacern Realty Group, which is based out of Rhode Island and they've done a couple of projects now in Mass, or at least they have one that's built and one that's in, in the, in the pipeline, but they provided relatively little data associated with their application as well. So it's been hard for our boards and committees to, and our staff really, to kind of take a look at it and, and basically find specifics to, I don't want to necessarily say take issue with, but at least evaluate. But that being said, there are some. And just, again, like the, the, the project design itself, so if you're just looking at aesthetics, you know, you look at what was envisioned by the town through the Wildwood Mixed Use District where this project is located, which was, you know, really supposed to be a self-enclosed and self-contained mixed-use district that had a variety of uses, like commercial, residential, open space, recreational. You know, obviously the project as proposed through this 40B sticks strictly to residential and so it, it, just in that element, in that essence, it kind of goes against what the town had envisioned, specifically with regards to the buildings themselves. So the height is something that I think that we've all taken issue with. So we're talking about on the site, two four-story buildings and two five-story buildings. So on the site, under the traditional zoning, I'll, I'll call it the traditional zoning or, or zoning, I should say, you could do a five-story building as long as it's mixed use. If you only decided to stick to like a residential-only building, the limitation was three stories. And so obviously you see a deviation from what our zoning is by having four and five-story only residential buildings. So I think that's something that we, you know, we take some issue with. With regards to infrastructure, of course, water and sewer is, is very, very, very important in detailing, you know, the issues with our, our water supply and, you know, look, the fact is that we do have this supplemental connection now to the MWRA, but we're limited in what we can basically take from Southborough in terms of gallonage. I think it's 300,000 gallons a day. So, you know, there, there's potential to bump up against that even if you don't look at the Mill project itself. And then also the town sewer system, you know, we've talked about the limitations associated with that, both from a physical perspective, but then also from, again, a paper perspective and what we're allowed to basically what they call an inter-basin transfer from, you know, the basin that we withdraw water from and then, because essentially what we're doing is we're drawing water out of our basin and we're transporting it through our sewer system to Boston Harbor. And so, again, there's limitations that we're allowed to do through DEP in that and then also with what we're allowed to basically transport through Framingham System through the inter-municipal agreement. And so, again, the addition of 226 units is, is not going to help that at all. So one of the things that we found, I'll just say frustrating to a certain extent, is that, you know, in order to really kind of identify what wetlands resources that you're potentially impacting, you have to have an up-to-date delineation or you should have an up-to-date delineation. What they have, what the developer has provided is really kind of an estimation of what the wetland resources are, that is significantly out of date by a couple of decades. Now, the person who did that work, Joyce Hastings, I don't know if she's retired yet, but Joyce has done a lot of work in Ashland and, and Metro West through GLM Consulting. But Joe, just as you mentioned, how much the resource area, wetland resource area had grown on Olive Street over the past, you know, 15 years, you can imagine having a very similar situation here. And so I think a, a real delineation needs to be done in order for us to see what the impact is. And I think that's going to impact the conceptual plan as well. Traffic concerns, oh wow.
Uh-oh.
Obviously a little bit different than what the, with the, in terms of the specifics than what we had with the Mill site, but the fact is, is that 135 and Waverly Street is really kind of the main thoroughfare corridor from east to west, you know, running through Ashland. And so, again, adding, I, I think there's 431 spaces, you know, adding 431 cars, let's just say, take that for what it is. Exactly. And, and then I think also the fact that it's proximity to the Public Safety Building, which, you know, obviously there needs to be, you know, quick egress from our public safety vehicles to do that. And granted, we have, you know, signalization and everything that's been put in place, but, you know, anytime you're adding that volume. Exactly.
Right.
They provided no stormwater plan, so it's been really, really hard to evaluate what the stormwater impact would be. Again, I'll draw a comparison to, you know, what we saw with the Mill proposal, where we had an idea of what they were thinking of from a stormwater perspective, using underground systems and things like that, you know, we could, we could point out where that could be a concern. We really didn't have that much of an opportunity with this. So I think given all of that information, or lack of information, you could say. You know, I have, you know, that the board is not supportive of this project as, as it's presented and is asking mass housing to, to deny it as, as presented.
Did we ever mention, sorry. Did we ever mention the fact that this proposed project is directly across from the Bracket Reservoir? And the potential stormwater coming off of that could potentially be an issue to the Bracket Res?
I don't think I mentioned specifically bracket reservation, but I did mention the fact, Joe, that, you know, given the pitch of the site, the fact that there's a lot of ledge, so you're not going to have a lot of infiltration, you know, both during construction and after construction, you want to be concerned about the runoff, again, given the pitch.
I'm just wondering if that may have been, or could be a, a potential issue for them, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I can certainly add some speci, specificity to that.
That seems like a good idea.
Because the, you know, the other thing is, you're talking about, again, the pitch of the site and I know they plan on flattening it to a certain extent, but it's, it's not going to be that way throughout the whole site. You know, you don't want to have a whole lot of water runoff that washes onto Waverly Street or 135 that could freeze over especially, you know, that presents some challenges as well.
We know that all too well from the Public Safety Building.
Well, and from Cirrus, right?
Cirrus, right.
I mean, that's built on a huge hill and the amount of problems they had and they, and they had plans for their retaining pool and things like that, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Prior to it being built, so we were able to see that.
Well, and then as they built it, they had issues. Right, well, and then as they built it, they had issues.
Yeah. So we did, so in addition to our letter, you know, I did, like similar to the last packet, include the information that we'd received from other boards and then also the information that we'd received from the public and putting the form up and everything online.
Questions or comments?
Speaking of stormwater.
I just have a question, Mike. You know, in terms of the, I know we talk about our sewer, that all of our wastewater goes through Framingham and that's through an inter-municipal agreement. And so, so, so we're at capacity in terms of maximum what we are allowed to put through Framingham at this point?
Yeah, so there's different, there's different limits, Claudia. So there's like an annual limit, there's a daily limit, there's a peak limit. And with regards to the Framingham IMA, we exceed what's allowable under our peak limit at, at certain periods, like during certain storms and things like that.
Okay, so, and, and is it because, is there more capacity that there would be on us to purchase? Or is there not that capacity even out there?
There's potentially capacity that we could, we could purchase. You know, the other thing that you hear us talk about in terms of being able to expand our capacity is working hard on our INI program and making sure that any kind of leaks that we have in the system that contribute to what is flowing in as, as part of our sewage is, that's just regular groundwater is cut off, so that preserves that capacity for actual sewage to flow.
Right.
So there's, you know.
But in the meantime, if, you know, how do we add all these units if we, we can't or there isn't the capacity to, to send the wastewater through?
I, I think that is a, that is a good question.
That seems like a pretty good, basic problem.
That is a, a good question.
It's a pretty straightforward problem.
The city G already said that the sewer moratorium was.
Well, that, well, the housing moratorium.
The housing, the sewer one.
The sewer was okay.
The sewer was okay?
Yeah.
Although, just remember, you know, with a 40B project like a sewer moratorium.
Yeah, but if there's, if there, I just don't understand, you know, if there isn't the capacity to do it then.
Well, there's, I mean, and that is a broader conversation, Claudia, that's happening across the state, especially with the MBTA Communities Law, because there are some communities that don't have sewer. And, and so, you know, talking about, you know, putting projects in at a density of 15 units per acre, you know, developing a septic system and having a piece of property that can handle a septic system that would work, an onsite wastewater treatment plant.
Right.
It, it's very, very, it's one of those open-ended questions that the state didn't necessarily think about when they went through and passed this quote-unquote, well-intentioned law, you know.
And then, again, in their proposal, these are all apartments. There's no, nothing that, no homeownership involved in this.
Correct, it's all rental and all.
And that doesn't have to be the case with a 40B.
Correct.
Right, you could have homeownership.
You can have homeownership, and obviously, there's benefits to each, each one. You know, the primary benefit to the town for the rental units is that 40B, you get to count all of the units towards your affordable housing inventory, which gets you closer to that 10%, which in turn allows you to turn away 40B projects that are not necessarily desirable. Whereas with ownership projects, you're only allowed to count the affordable units, the true affordable units.
Okay.
And why that is, I, I still have not been able to get a straight answer.
And if, and if the, the real goal is to give people the opportunity to have, you know, perhaps ownership, then it would seem to me that if, if you're doing it for that reason, right, which is supposedly the reason this is happening, that 40Bs are in place, they are to provide affordable housing and I would think in the long term, some kind of ability to purchase and own, then you need a, you need a stepping ground, right? You, you can't, people aren't going to get, ever get into the market, for the most part, if they don't have lower place to start.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that their idea is that we're going to provide affordable housing and that's going to get more people in the market. I think the idea behind a 40B, yes, they can do, they can do purchase, but the idea is just how, how can we increase the affordable housing stock, right? And we're seeing more and more rentals rather than homeownerships, right? You're not seeing condos, which is what you used to see in buildings like this, right? They would be condominiums and part of it's probably the affordability or the long-term profitability, there's a lot, right, and yeah, possible market.
Market factors really, I would imagine, drive these sort of decisions, Claudia, like insofar as these developers and what's profitable to them and what's not.
They're not out as rentals.
Yeah, no, I understand that what the developers are in it for. What I'm saying is, what is the, the state in it for, right?
Yeah, yeah, I think, you know, certainly, you know, when 40B was incorporated in the late 60s, you know, the world that we live in in Massachusetts was very, very different in a number of different ways. I do know with like the MBTA Communities Law, you know, what the overarching goal is, even though I think the state has done a horrible job of really kind of saying this, is from an economic development perspective. And the concern that you have high-wage, highly-skilled workers that are leaving the state to other parts of the country because of high housing costs, the idea is to create enough housing to, and I would assume, you know, by just through traditional market forces, bring housing costs down just through flooding the market with units that people will end up staying here.
There's a lot of years under the, beyond that now, a lot of years that we have history and it hasn't seemed to have done that.
Well, I agree, and quite frankly, I think, you know, from, one of the things that I've had a hard time with, with the MBTA Communities Law, is that, you know, those highly skilled, high-wage earners that are leaving the state because of housing are not leaving to find cheaper apartments.
Right, exactly.
They're looking to find cheaper single-family homes.
They want a way to get into.
And that's just anecdotal information on my part.
Well, and I would say, I would go so far as to say that maybe single-family homes aren't necessarily everyone's goal any longer, that that too has changed some.
I would agree.
That's a fair assumption.
But I think that ownership, the ownership piece probably still is there, particularly for that, those, those people who are leaving the state because they're highly educated and they want, you know, to work and be able to buy something.
I, I think there's.
They don't want to live in an apartment for.
Right, I mean, I think there's a lot of complexity around this issue. And, you know, I, I think that there, you know, 20 years ago, 25 years ago, a strategy for folks, I think in that meeting, those demographics, would probably be to initially rent and be able to save money to be able to put a down payment on a house. Anecdotally, that's kind of how my hubby and I did it.
Yeah.
But, you know, market forces as they are, availability how it is, some of these apartments, I'm looking at these rental prices, they're almost as much as, or even more than, you know, a mortgage situation. So like, the question is, to Michael's point, you know, what kind of, you know, what, what's happening here? How are we achieving these goals? And then, of course, there's also the issue of, you know, not just the height, you know, people who are making a lot of money aren't the only ones who are having trouble trying to find a place to live, you know, so there's affordable housing and there's low-income housing. There was a general housing crisis, you know, in the northeast in our, our city. And I, to all of your points, I don't know if current policy, direction or recommendations are addressing any of this adequately.
Right, right.
So, you know.
I mean, personally, I, I think, you know, what the state should be concentrating on is more on the wage end, you know, but that, that's just me. I can't remember if it was The Times or The Globe that did an article a couple of weeks ago just doing an analysis of renting versus owning, because they are talking about the fact that more, more people now are choosing to rent and making that choice as opposed, and choosing consciously not to own.
That's right.
And they go through the, the financial factors. But of course, it makes sense in some cases to rent only because housing prices now are so high vis-à-vis, you know, what your, what people's incomes are, what.
Interest rates.
Interest rates, exactly. Money's expensive.
But it used to be that you did, that you rented so that you could save money, because it was cheaper to rent than it was to own.
Exactly, exactly.
But the other thing to remember is this is all cyclical, right?
It is, yeah, and that's fair.
I mean, I remember when we were buying our, you know, we, we were, we did the same thing. We rented an apartment for a number of years, then we looked to buy, I think our interest rates were 11, 12, 13% to buy our first condo.
Wow.
Right, in the 90s, that's what interest rates were for things. Yeah, yeah, depending.
In the 80s, even higher.
Right, and then they went back down and, and now they're going back. So it's, it's just like housing and work and, it's all cyclical.
I hope the Boy Scouts are getting, taking notes here.
Economics.
Economics.
It's a little economics 101.
Okay, we're sort of going a little off track, but any other questions or comments specifically to the comment letter that has been pulled together? Any changes or anything like that that you need to see?
So, my question is, are we planning to kind of workshop this? Because I'm, I'm not, or maybe we take a bit of a break and we have a chance to actually read this, because I don't know if I'm comfortable voting on the letter without having a chance to actually read the letter.
Don't disagree.
I, I think that's fair, Brandy, because I, to be honest, I haven't really had a chance to really look at it or absorb it.
You just got it.
Right, right, right. So either way, like if we want to workshop it together.
What we could do, well, we could either workshop it together or we could take 10 minutes and with that, I mean, some of it is similar to what we saw for the other letter. So either we can walk through this, Michael took, took us through some of it, or we can take a 10-minute pause and have the opportunity to read through it, which, what are people feeling?
I mean, the, the other thing, Yolanda, is, I mean, I don't have a, a time like, like noon tomorrow that it has to be in, like it has to be in tomorrow. So, you know, if you wanted to look at it overnight and provide me comments, you know, tomorrow during the day, I can spend time.
I'd, I'd rather take 10 minutes and read it through and then we can have some consensus and.
That, that would be helpful for everybody.
Because you're going to need our vote on it and I'm not comfortable voting until I read it, so.
No, I don't disagree.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
That's okay.
So Mackie, I don't know if you can put something up on the screen? We're going to take a 10-minute pause so we can read through this document and then we'll be back at 8:30. So if you're watching.